Item number thirty-seven, the second reading is approved unanimously. Item number twenty-seven. Malpin. Oleg.
That conditional use, it isn't allowed. Use, additional use under, will be getting a recombination plat for that. And then to the west, the request is to reduce the buffer from one hundred and fifty feet to twenty-five feet due to the amount of wetlands and the amount of uplands that it would take from the parcel. The reduced buffer area here on the west will consist of a six-foot berm with a six-foot fence. I think it also should be noted that the parcel to the south, which is this parcel right here, does have an active code enforcement action as the parcel was cleared and graded without permitting. However, that does not go into the hundred and fifty-foot buffer of the parcel in question. Staff is recommending alternative one.
That's not oriented the same way as the other picture we just saw, is it? That's what confuses me.
Yes, sir. So it would be, this is the parcel right here that's requested.
And so the northern end of that buffer is how much?
Up here, they want to reduce it, they want to eliminate.
That'd be the east, wouldn't it?
Well, northeast.
Yes. So this would be, they would eliminate this buffer and then you're going to combine these two parcels together.
Right.
This buffer here would be a hundred and fifty feet. And then over here is where they are asking for the twenty-five feet with a six-foot berm and a six-foot fence.
And what's on the other side? Is that, is that all industrial on the other side?
Yeah, it's all in that little strip.
It's a twenty-five-foot right-of-way the county has along.
Yes, right here, and then this is industrial.
And all those buildings to the back northeast is?
This is industrial as well.
Yeah, okay, alright. Just make sure I understood. Any other questions or discussion for the board?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As I stated before, as we've had previous discussions, if we're going to decrease the industrial buffer down to twenty-five feet, I don't like that. I feel that normally when we give concessions, that we're getting something. And what I'm looking here, just in my opinion, and I could be out in left field, I don't feel that we're really getting very good concessions here. This is on the gateway into our county on a four-lane highway. I just do not like the twenty-five-foot industrial buffer. I know this is in an industrial park, but, I mean, a six-foot berm really doesn't make me feel real good. I mean, I just-
You're doing a berm and a fence?
Hmm?
Doing a berm and a fence on that area? Is that, is that true?
May I?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, we're planting a six-foot berm with a six-foot fence on top of the berm, and we're also going to plant the berm. It should be noted that the twenty-five foot is only being requested against the heavy, the B three, which is already operating as almost a heavy industrial already. We also have a letter of support from Builders First Source, which owns the adjoining lot. And they're in agreement with the application. And they are really the only ones that would be affected by it. The, the area that you see from the road would be, would stay the hundred and fifty foot. So, we're not-
It blurs me more than that part along the back because you can see it from the highway.
Correct.
I'd like to see a privacy fence or something right there to block something along the way, you know, at least.
We're leaving the hundred and fifty foot. If you would like a privacy fence, I think that would be acceptable to the law.
There's no vegetation there now, and you can see right through it and-
We, we are planning on, there is a small section without vegetation and we'll, we'll plant that back. But we were told by Greg Hood to wait until after this meeting to, to do any rectification.
Yes, sir. So I, yeah, I get it that the buffer there, you're not requesting a variance for that on twenty-one, but I'm with you. Yeah, well, I see something there. I don't want to, I wouldn't want to see any kind of- You can see wrecked cars through there. Wrecked cars through there at all. That's a, that's a quarter. You're really coming into the county really good there. But we have to protect that. Is that thing for Builders First Source, is it in our packet? I don't think I saw that, the letter.
It was provided to staff and the planning board had it.
I think that'd be the concession that you might be-
What are our screening requirements under three-point-one-six?
You can get a fence.
Do we have screening requirements?
Something on-
It changes when we do-
With junk yards.
With junk yards?
Yeah.
I think it's just six-foot right now, but you could do-
Is it, I got it.
Yeah.
And that's the only reason I would ask for this circumstance because it is viewable from, from twenty-one. Any other time, it'd be something else, but-
And I looked at that, but I did not look up three-point-one-six.
We'd be happy to add that in.
Yes, sir. And knowing the owner, he would be glad to do it.
Yeah. We, we would probably put it on the backside of the buffer so you don't see the fence.
Right, yeah, sure, that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, three-point-one-six does require, it says a solid fence or wall, a minimum of seven feet.
Does it, does it say whether that can be screening or does it have to be a fence, solid of nature?
Says it's, just has to be maintained in good condition.
There may be something in there already.
Yeah, it has to be, you know, that's painted, except for mason reconstruction if it were. Or it says, "or with suitable evergreen plantings." I'm not, um, sure that's in our ordinance, so, you know.
So three-point-one-six would require him to put a seven-foot fence and maintain it. And it'd be a screened fence, one that hides.
Or suitable evergreen plantings. That's what the ordinance says.
Well, so, so it's not required. He said, he said he would make that as part of his requirement.
Yeah, sure, oh, yeah.
So it's not required, and it should put it in its condition. I thought we had that as a requirement.
We're happy to provide it.
Alright, is any other questions?
It's a little, that, that's a kind of a difficult section to-
You'll have to walk it because we'll see what you're looking at. He's got twelve foot up there, that's on the, on that upper east end, and that's gonna be pretty good, I think.
Well, we're also leaving a twenty-five foot in addition to the berm. The berm itself is going to be twenty-five foot wide, so the buffer is really fifty feet, including the berm.
Handle the, the wetlands that's right there in between that.
Um, we were not putting any berm or fence or anything through the wetlands. The Corps won't allow us to do that, of course. But you'll have the existing vegetation there. So, it's heavily wooded, the wetlands are. So, that, the twenty-five feet of existing vegetation gives you the, the upper story obscuring and then the, the berm with the fence on top and planted outside face of it, you know, obscures the undergrowth.
There'll still be some fencing around that wetland area, won't there, or will that just be open?
Um, we would probably plan on some chain link fencing, but we can put a screened fencing if you'd like.
Alright, any other discussion, if you might want to make a motion?
And again, all of this will be accessed from the commerce side, so.
Well, I, the only thing I want, when you look at the zoning, we're showing that Elite Sports, which is not there, it's not a sports academy anywhere anymore. That's, I think they, they have moved out, though I'm sure it's either, probably, probably go into more of a suitable use for that area than-
Most of that back through there is like Builders First Source. It's a very heavy, they're actually going to be, Builders First Source probably more in heavy user than we are. You know, they go and put a car and it might be there for a week, you know, it's not-
A lot of those smaller parcels, over the last couple of years, we've, they've, we've kind of, they're non-conforming, but we've rezoned them into industrial.
Make them conform way too left.
Just because of how they're using the property and it just made sense. I think there's what, maybe, it's just that one parcel. That, that one, where it says one ninety-one, that's one parcel.
That's all one parcel?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it is.
And that parcel really functions as a warehouse industrial.
It does. I mean, it was that academy, but I, I do know for a fact they've moved out.
Yeah, it wouldn't be ideal for a retail business anymore back in here. Let's, let's do this at the board's-
And what I do, I do want to protect that twenty-one corridor visual.
Let's do this.
I think we can.
Let's do this first, then, I don't, I don't think I hear anybody against the conditional use. It's just the variance is going to become a question. What we, if there's a requirement for-
I know Commissioner Deloche has concerns on that. Then we can work through those.
Can we address the conditional use first and then come to the variance now that we've discussed them both?
We can, we can. They're two separate.
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright, so is there a motion on item number twenty-seven? The planning board recommend approving application by Jay Malpin as agent for Oleg Micnick for a conditional use located on Highway twenty-one south to allow for an automotive export yard in I-1 zoning map number four sixty-five, parcel number one A in fifth district. Is there a motion to approv-
I'll make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second. Alright, motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Burdette to approve alternative one for the conditional use. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
No.
Alright, we have a no from Mr. Deloche. Everybody else is approving. Alright, so we'll go ahead and do the second reading on the conditional use. Consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Jay Malpin. Do we have to do that? See, that's right, that's right. Got to do that in the next meeting, okay. Can't do that, so that'll be postponed because we have a no vote. Alright, now let's address the variance that, if we're going to approve an variance or is it going to stick with the requirements? So, forward having discussion on that. Want to offer a motion differ from what's recommended by staff or motion for staff and planning board recommendations?
What's staff's interpretation of, now that they have the conditional use under three-point-one-six?
Of the screening?
Screening.
Yeah, so-
Such a wet area, you know, it's a wetland area, but we still, you know, we've got, the screening is there.
Right, and so the, the view we have on that is, is that it said it has to be completely screened, right? So if the, they're not parking the vehicles on the wet area, so if it's not screened, for example, in that, in that-
Doesn't have to be screened out, it can be screened further in.
Further in, right, so it's not visible. And, you know, it's important, with, with that case, it becomes completely, you know, up to the time when we, when we do the inspection to see if there's, if there's visibility. And it's not just that time. If at any time from there, it does not become, it, it becomes out of compliance, then they have to, they have to reestablish screening for it. This is, when we, when we instituted this new ordinance, this conditional use, this would be the first one that's, that's rezoning into it. And the other thing that he's doing is,
Be the second one.
With the recombination, he would be, he would bring his other site into compliance as well with that.
That's right.
So we would stand on that road, Commerce Court, effectively, at time of inspection and check for visibility. And then, you know, possibly come back, you know, when it's open to see if there's visibility.
Okay. So really, that brings it, I don't, um, brings us back to the twenty-five-foot buffer request variance. Any thoughts from the boards on, board on that?
Well, the fencing is taken care of. They got to do that according to zoning, so it's just the twenty-five, right? It's just that, do you want to deny or approve the twenty-five?
Well, well, just to keep in mind, if that one parcel were, were zoned like the others have been, that we've done over the last couple of years, that section's a twenty-five-foot buffer automatically because it's industrial to industrial. I know that's an assumption, that's, you know, we can't just make that assumption without considering the fact that it's, it is, it is a B zoning currently.
Yeah, I do see that area often, and he's about the only person that complies with that type of operation.
I know, I know, and I'm, I'm-
He'll, you know, even if we approved everything and you came to him later and said we needed to do something, he's the type of person that would do it.
And bear in mind, when we rezoned that one parcel to the northwest of, of that B parcels, we had to grant variances at that point for his separation.
And the part that was in violation, he had no idea. He called me on that one. Said that is, they, the people who were mobilizing to go there had finished early, didn't tell anybody, and he's, correct me if I'm wrong, showed up, started clearing and it took, nobody knew, but the people actually clearing, you probably know some of that too. He was very upset about that and worried about that and-
Sure, sure.
Instead, just tell him what to do, directify it, and he will. Do we have a motion to?
Isn't the, um, that's handled at the staff level?
Yeah, well, she brought that up, so I wanted to-
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm glad you did, you want to bring everything out?
We've been told by Officer Hood to hold until after the outcome of this meeting.
Yes, sir. So is there a motion to approve it and deny the variance?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve, and we can, I, I assume at, at time of sketch plan, is that coming?
Yes, it's on the agenda.
Okay. And then we could discuss probably a little more the screening type or the, you know, or clarify that ordinance, you know, of, of our understanding.
Should we make a motion?
So, so yes, my mo, let me, let me make sure, let me clarify what planning board recommended.
So it's the west and north?
Yeah, um, well, the alternative one would, would grant a variance against the parcel that's adjacent to twenty-one, and that's not what we're wanting to do. So we probably need to remove that.
No, that's not what we're requesting.
I know that's not what you're requesting, I just don't want to, that's what, that's alternative number one, am I correct? Is anybody following me?
Sorry, no.
I'm going to reference numbers. Are you see parcel four-six-five-dash-one?
Yes.
If, if we, if I were to make a motion and we were to approve alternative one, the buffer between that parcel would reduce down to twenty-five feet.
I was thinking that was supposed to be a hundred and fifty foot.
The twenty-five-foot buffer would be here, between four-six-five delta dash seven and four-six-five dash one alpha.
That's correct, but if you read, read alternative one, it doesn't, it doesn't stipulate that. I just want to make sure we're, that it's only along that property, those two property lines.
Did I forget the A?
Well, south, south says, Phil, south says no variance. The plan shows required one-hundred-and-fifty vegetation buffer between I-one and parcel four-sixty-five-one-A, which is the one on twenty-one, right?
Yes.
Yes.
On the south. So between four-sixty-five-one-A, the property in question, and four-sixty-five-one, still going to be a hundred and fifty-foot buffer?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's on the south.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with planning board, I just, I don't, I don't want it to be, I, I don't want to make a motion to approve of alternative one because I don't think that clarifies enough. So if I make a motion to approve planning board's recommendation, we should be, it will cover everything.
Okay. We have a motion of Mr. Kiefer to approve planning board's recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Burdette. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
No.
Mr. Deloche is voting no, all the rest are ayes, so the ayes have it. And we'll do the second reading at the next meeting. Item number thirty-one is a sketch plan. Planning board recommends approving an application by Eric Edwards for a approval of a sketch plan located at twelve-oh-four Millpon Road for Vortex Aeronautical and Action Overhead Doors and Supply Company Zone B-three, map number four-four-six, parcel number seven C in the fifth district. Ms. Chelsea?
Yes, sir, so for this, Mr. Edwards is requesting a sketch plan approval. A traffic assessment or memo will be required during the development process. An access easement agreement with owners of four-four-six-dash-seven-B will be required during the process, the development plan process, unless G dot approves a separate driveway permit. This parcel is Zone B-three, which you approved in two thousand and twenty-two and does have a conditional use for repair and painting of aviation parts. Staff is recommending alternative number one.
Alrighty, is any, just questions, discussion from the board? Is your motion to approve?
A motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Burdette to approve alternative one, all in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Any opposed, no? Hearing no, noes, it passes unanimously. Item number thirty-two, the planning board recommends approving, approving an application by Randy Hadden, Jeremy Neese, and Chuck Hildebrandt for approval of sketch plan located on Highway eighty for Highway eighty warehouse, Zone AR-one and B-three, proposed I-one zoning, map number three fifty-four, parcel number twenty-one, twenty-one-B and twenty-one-C in the first district.
Would we approve this without the second reading?
Yeah.
We got to do the second reading next meeting first.
Alright, so do the second reading, then we'll come back. So this will be also tabled to the, um-
June twentieth.
June twentieth. That's my question.
Thank you.
Item number thirty-three, the planning board recommends approving application by Mark Harper as agent for Harper Family Properties LLC for approval of a sketch plan located on Noel C. Conaway Road from Atlantic Self-Storage Zone B-three, map number four thirty-six, parcel number one in the first district, second district.
Yes, sir, so this five-acre parcel was rezoned to B-three in nineteen ninety for the purpose of developing an auto repair and welding business. However, that property was not developed. The proposed development is in a flood zone, so a Lomar application to FEMA will be required. Staff is recommending alternative number one.
Okay, any questions or discussion from the board? Do you have a motion?
I make a motion to approve alternative one, approving the sketch plan.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve the sketch plan, since presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing no, noes, it passes unanimously. Item number thirty-four, another sketch plan, the planning board recommends approving an application by Jay Malpin as agent for, now is this the sketch plan, what we got to do a second reading on?
Yes, sir, you can't do this one either.
So we'll do that one again on, that'll be tabled to June twentieth as well. We got item number thirty-five. The, the planning board recommends approving an application by Mark Berthold as agent for Builders First Source for approval of a sketch plan located on Commercial Drive for Builders First Source, Zone B-three, map number four sixty-five-D, parcel number two, three, four, and six in the fifth district.
Yes, sir, so this project is an expansion of existing business from four-six-five delta dash four into four-six-five delta dash three and two, and as well as four-six-five-D dash six. And we'll use existing access on Commercial Court, so there will be no access to Goshen Road Extension. A planted buffer along Goshen Road Extension is proposed. Staff is recommending alternative number one.
Okay, any questions or discussion regarding the sketch plan?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Floyd to approve as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing no, noes, it passes unanimously. And we've already taken care of thirty-six and thirty-seven, so item number thirty-eight is a public hearing. The planning board recommends approving an application by Sperry Tents Southeast as agent for Robert M. North to rezon seven-point-one-two acres located on Highway twenty-one from R-one to B-one to allow for the, for an event, excuse me, for an event rental business, map number three sixty-six, parcel number thirty-nine-A in the third district. Ms. Katie?
Yes, sir. The applicant wishes to establish an event facility rental, basically, featuring a showroom and office in these two ten-thousand-square-foot storage buildings. The reason being that the event rentals are sometimes quite, quite, quite large. There will be no onsite retail, and B-one is being the lowest intensity is what staff had discussed when we met with the applicant because this type of business is neither expressly permitted nor prohibited in B-one. This is also coming with a conditional use to allow the specific use. Staff is recommending approval.
Okay, we'll open a public hearing and see if there's anyone wanting to speak in favor or against this rezoning.
My name is Andrew McCoy. The owner is Sperry Tents Southeast. I'm just here if there's any questions or any concerns.
Very good. Anyone tonight speaking opposition to this, to this zoning request? Seeing no one coming forward to speak in opposition, I'll close the public hearings, see if there's a discussion among the board or a motion.
So this is going to be like retail space, people coming by? I guess that's what the three-thousand-square-foot showroom is?
So the showroom will not, it, it's not retail. It's going to be appointment-only for current clients that have signed contracts to view their rentals and everything that they want to see.
Okay, alright.
Any other questions, discussion? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with staff and planning board recommendations.
Second. Motion, Mr. Deloche, second by Mr. Burdette, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing no, noes, it passes unanimously. We'll do the second reading. Consideration to approve a second reading of an application by Sperry Tents Southeast as agent for Robert M. North to rezon seven-point-one-two acres located on Highway twenty-one from R-one to B-one to allow for an event rental business, map number three sixty-six, parcel number thirty-nine-A in the third district.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deloche, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve the second reading, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no? Hearing no, noes, it passes unanimously. And our final public hearing tonight is the planning board recommends approving an application by Sperry Tents Southeast, agent for Robert M. North for a conditional use located at Highway twenty-one to allow for an event business in B-one zoning, map number three sixty-six, parcel number thirty-nine-A in the third district. Ms. Katie?
Yes, so, again, because this, we, as staff, felt that this did fall well within the realm of personal and professional services as Latin B-one. There's nothing comparable expressly permitted or prohibited. So just to, um, just to get clarification on use, we have the applicant go through conditional use as well.
Okay, we'll open a public hearing. Anyone tonight speaking in favor of the conditional use or against?
Same thing.
This is on where it's here in front of us?
Yes, sir.
Anyone tonight speaking in opposition to this conditional use? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff and planning board recommendations.
Second. Motion, Mr. Deloche, second by Mr. Burdette to approve with staff and planning board recommendations, all in favor, say aye. Motion, Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette, to approve with staff and planning board recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously, and we can do the second reading. Consideration to approve a second reading of an application by Sperry Tents Southeast as agent for Robert M. North for a conditional use located at Highway twenty-one, on Highway twenty-one to allow for an event rental business in B-one. This is map number three-sixty-six, parcel number thirty-nine-A in the Third District. Motion?
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette, to approve the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aha.
Any opposed, no? Hearing no, no's, it passes unanimously.
Appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our business for this evening. Do we need a, a need for a brief executive session, discuss anything?
I don't think so.
I see no need for executive session, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Burdette?
I thought we had an executive session. Okay.
I thought we did, too, but it's not.
Would you, I mean-
Do you want to discuss, uh, some of the business of the day?
We can unadjourn and-
Well, I've only got a motion. I have a second here, so we can-
That's true.
If, if they want to discuss that, that issue, I can, I can, we can have a brief executive session.
Probably do need to get an update there.
I'd do it.
Make some updates.
Yeah, let's do an update on that, that legal issue. Okay. Would you make, somebody make a motion to go into executive session, discuss pending litigation?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss property, personnel, and pending litigation.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, any opposed, no? Hearing no, no's, we're going to go to executive session. We'll dismiss our staff, and appreciate everyone being here tonight.
Thank you.